I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to adopt the new agenda that is at our place here. We got here. Place that's there. Second, any questions? Hearing none, all favors say aye please.
Aye.
Losers requesting permission to address the board. Is there any visitor here tonight who wishes to address the board on an agenda item? Okay, would you please state your name and address and what agenda item you...
I'm Fred Shorn from the swim coach at Boys and Girls High School Team, N and Club. I live in Oklahoma, 1918 Rosewood, Oklahoma, 2002. And a little over a year ago, we brought to the board the idea of having an announcement. I came here three years ago, my first year here, and noticed how small the Boys and Girls High School team was. And from my past, I wanted to change the culture of swimming. I was approached by Mr. Sims to see what I was going to do during the offseason. Mr. Burke had a summer program, and I told him I would like to start a year-round USA Olympic community, United States Olympic swimming team. We brought that to the board, and we've been working on it diligently for the last little over a year now. And we're actually in our first season of short course right now, with a couple of meetings already. But I first want to tell you thank you for allowing us to do that, because it's meant so much to some of these younger individuals that I've been coaching. But during this past week, my stress level has been very high because I was under the impression that we were going to get charged, get $10 an hour fee to use the pool, which would wipe this whole thing out. Now, I'm going to say a couple stories first. You know, we're in a, next year is an Olympic year, Olympic year, and in swimming, because swimming and gymnastics is your number one and two sports in the Olympics, there's an influx of kids that come throughout the United States to participate in the Olympic trials in Omaha. With that comes a bunch of dreams. And with those dreams, they start very young. And the story I got to tell you here is, there was a little boy in Baltimore that his sister had scoliosis after she started swimming, and he started swimming. Well, he got into trouble, and he come from a divorced family. The coach had him and his parents sitting around table. They talked, he went back to swimming, and again, he got into trouble. And again, the coaches talked to him and set him straight. That individual ended up being Michael Brooks, the dream, the ultimate swimmer who's ever been. With those dreams, Indiana Swimming, which is a part of the United States Swimming that like coming out of Colorado Springs, I'll just pull this past year, that Indiana has more clubs in the state of Indiana than anywhere else. And we promote those dreams. If I'm going to change the culture of the high school team, I need a program. Aiden here, he could swim, he did swim for the club, and he can swim now. He looked like a fish on his ass. I got another kid that just started with the club, started on the, on the club during the summer about two months ago. He even looked worse than Aiden, but now he's swimming pretty good and doing the butterfly. I got two, a family, set of family members from Lafayette, they're wanting to come to the school just because of the swimming program. We open up the two weeks for free so that the middle school kids can practice, so they can get prepared, through, for their season. But we cannot afford a $10 a month, or $10 an hour pool rental fee that will cut our jugular rate, and we just can't do it. We have some goals set in mind as far as, we've already bought quite a bit of equipment, myself and Mr. Howard and the club have bought stuff for the school that the school's using and the club is using. We're wanting to find some corporate sponsors and put $25,000 worth of lane, uh, new lane blocks in, or starting blocks in, and new record boards for short course meters, and high school, the high school, middle school, freshman records, and your short, and long course, or long course meters and then your short course yards, record boards. Those are all records that need to be acknowledged. The bottom line is, if this, if this goes through, it's going to cut the dreams of these kids that I've already started coaching. And I gave myself five to seven years to turn around the program. If not, then I, then I, I'll have to step back because I know that it's not going to grow. Where I coached before at Hawaii, I did it for free because it was right two miles away from my house. I had twenty-some kids approximately coming in the middle, middle of their summer vacation, early in the morning, giving up their savings. For over eight years, nine years, over seventy-two kids that had came through that program. I required them to pay for the Y. I finally got booted out of Hawaii for the same reason, in wonder charging a fee and use their pool when I got them memberships, because these kids, with all their gear and the stuff they need, and their families are already strapped, they can't afford that. I was giving the Y a false impression that they had a swim team, even though that's where I started swimming myself, that they, they booted me out saying I couldn't do that anymore. We could not feed their, their price because they just couldn't afford it. So, what we have in the future, what, and, and just something that goes on from what other swim teams do that are associated with high schools, and I'm all for this because this will promote the growth. Once it becomes fifty-one percent of the kids, or less than fifty-one percent of the kids, then they start charging, because fifty-one percent of the kids are coming out from your school system. But if you have kids that are coming through your school system from grade school in the school district, they count as an individual. And once that's over fifty-one percent, the pool is free. So, I just want to bring that up to you, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer anything you cut to some fast. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Approval minutes, we have the October fourteenth. If anybody else wants to. Okay, same. Approval minutes, October fourteenth, 2019 executive session, November eleventh, 2019 regular session, November, excuse me, November eleventh, November eleventh executive session, November twenty-fifth special session, November twenty-fifth regular session, November twenty-fifth work session, and November twenty-fifth executive session. Do you have a motion in the second to approve all of those minutes listed? Any discussion on those? Hearing none, all the favors say aye please.
Aye.
Vote, motion passes. Reports, administrative reports. Mrs. Clayton, would you like to begin?
Sure. Thank you. Hello, in the name of title, all the grants have now been approved. So Title I, II, III, and IV, after revisions and whatnot, they have all been approved. They can be spent, they've aren't been spent in some aspects as far as Title I gives a lot of salary for our interventionists, and so money has been going out, but now we can start doing the reimbursements now that all the grants have been approved. With the grants, grants that were written prior to me coming to the corporation are now due for their final expenditure reports that are all due with finances. So I have been working with Andrea. We have one grant in particular that was written and spent, but not spent the way it was written, and so I'm not sure where I can go with that. And so I have receipts from how it was supposed to be spent, but then I have reimbursements that were submitted not the way it was supposed to be spent. So I'm waiting on the state to give me a little bit of guidance before I submit that report because, well, because we all know it needs to be done the right way. With the grants, we have a history of writing the grants just the way they've been written because that's the way we've written them, but not necessarily maybe the way the grants should be spent based on the needs of the corporation. And so, already been talking with the administration, and we'll be moving forward with our discussions in January of really looking at how these grants can be spent on the different programs, and then hopefully proposing that we write those grants to meet the needs of the corporation and not just as practice. Special ed, December one counts is here, all of our data is in. We've got one little cleanup phase to get in before Friday. Thank God, I got to give a big shout out to Bill Schidler and Scott here. We found out the Tuesday before Thanksgiving that we were missing about forty-five students off of our report, which would have ultimately cost about $84,000. And we spent four hours on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving meeting, going through, and getting all of our data cleaned up. So, and that was just, it's an air within Skyward that the way that LaDesi had done the reporting in the past, we didn't really have to deal with. Now being on our own, we were able to clean it up, and we should move every kid accounted for both here and at Flint Lakes. And just so that you are aware, those Flint Lakes students are counted on our report, so that money will come to us, and so that money can go help offset the cost of the MOU. I think the last time we met, there was an e-learning day the following day, and on that day, I met with all of the special education staff and the gen ed staff, and then some administrators, and just really looking at the special ed program as we are on our own now, and discuss some of the challenges that we've already come across as staff and as a corporation based on the needs of our students, and just kind of brainstorming some solutions and making a list of what are some professional development needs that we're going to need in order to bring everybody up to snuff and be able to provide what we can for these students. Still working on Medicaid. Good news is it's not a thirty-two page packet anymore, it's just Logan's fort signing off that I am the director, so I'm waiting for that signature from them so that I can turn that back into the state, and then hopefully we will get those solutions up and running. Skyward Training for the data reporting is going to be the responsibility of one secretary in each building to help make sure that that data is cleaned up. And so we have a training date set for January sixteenth where they will be working alongside Scott and I, and then with the Skyward specialists to make sure that they know exactly how to go in and, make sure that the data when a student registers or after a case conference, that everything that we need to have identified for that student is in there correctly. And that's about it.
I would make a comment, Mrs. Clayton, you really worked hard on this grant situation. It has been, it has been really trying to be political lately. It's been a mess, and she has really worked hard to persevere.
Thank you.
We were sent Mr. Schidler, I must run over here, I can get over twenty minutes.
Bye.
It feels like we just were here with Thanksgiving in the middle, but, because some of the stuff I think we talked about as well, but I was highly impressed with our entire school corporation and all the teachers with our red bread, and we stayed open that day, and we did the rally down at the courthouse. The teachers were also represented in the parade as we came to Delphi. So I'm just kind of extremely proud of our staff and how they continue to be here for the students. Josh Strausser, our football coach, he, he goes above and beyond constantly for so many of our students. He's there for the staff all the time. On the front here, you can see he, our student who has cancer right now, he embarked on Make-A-Wish, and so that student was able to go attend a pre-football practice, meet the players and the coaches. And I talked to the student, he was, he was just over the moon that week, doing this and had so much, so many things to say. Of course, the veterans day program, and we have a concert in the high school, musical, which I talked about last night. Boys' School is also doing a nice job, and they're actively participating. This weekend, which is not on here because it's already passed, but boy, we were everywhere. Poms, what happened this weekend?
We placed first, we got first place at our first competition this previous weekend at Conference of Louisiana, so that was really exciting. This year, we're only competing in one style, dance and hip-hop. So it was really nice to get to go to some head over the basketball week and really stick to it, and our work really paid off, so that's great. We're looking forward, and this upcoming weekend, we will be editing a couple notes before we get, so looking forward to that.
Great. And they were still at the game.
The basketball game, the night before and tonight after.
Yeah. Speaking of the basketball game, I was, even though Mr. Dennison hasn't had a night off in I don't know how long, he had a wonderful opportunity with the honor band, and I wanted him to bring some of the students that were involved, and Mr. Dennison to really talk about it, even though he was at both basketball games with the band, parade with the band, honor bands, but thank you, Mr. Dennison, for coming as well tonight. But I think, I don't think people understand how unique the honor band is, so I wanted to be a perspective, so. I'm going to turn the floor over to them. Make sure you introduce yourself.
Okay. I'm Arielle Shone.
I'm Aiden Sings.
Okay. So this past weekend, myself along with three others, traveled to Monty, Indiana, to Boston University to be a part of the Indiana Fall State Honor Band, High School Honor Band. We were able to meet new friends and reconnect with old ones, some of which are the most musically gifted students in Indiana, and we rehearsed with some of the most prestigious conductors in the country, and played college level music. It was a great experience, and I just want to say thank you on behalf of all of us for being able to rescue him, and I have some good words to say to him.
I would also personally like to say thank you. For me, it was sort of, it was more than just a musically, a musical experience, it was also an experience, it allowed me to experience the Ball State campus and reconnect with friends who are Delphi alumni, who are currently attending there, and it was overall a great experience, and I would just like to say thank you for that.
Hey, I'm going to brag on some of them, Aiden and Joshua Rush, our horn player, it's an audition group when you get there. So there's close to two hundred kids that auditioned for two bands over, over a two-day period, and Aiden was our first chair clarinet player out of all the kids that were there, and Joshua Rush was the first, first chair horn player. And, you know, sight unseen, I mean, they get the music when they get there. So, just a, just a tribute to the natural talent that, that the kids have. So, just a real proud moment for, for the kids.
Any questions for? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
That's a hard act to follow, making students up there talking. But I'm actually representing pre-K through eighth ninth, and Mr. Schidler, I'm going to speak on their behalf, but I'll keep it short. Camden, we had a donation, a generous donation of over $400 from the Bone Brothers Boat Fishing for our school high grade. We were able to purchase some new books, so we are grateful to them. Camden also had their very first PBIS celebration, and for that, we brought in Elsa and Anna, so you can just imagine all the kindergarteners pre-K and their excitement having that celebration. Just like at the elementary, we provide them with PBIS rewards, which allows them to purchase items and just writing their least part, going off their throne, bringing different combinations and features our kids were able to experience that. Thanksgiving feast had over two hundred attendance, so we're looking forward to our Christmas celebration, which is on Friday, which will be. So, DCS, they have JA in a day, which is always amazing, because all of these volunteers come in and they spend time with our students, teaching them about business. The PBIS rewards, I mentioned how we're trying to get that going, K, pre-K through five. Middle school, Mr. Raddick wants you to know that things are going really, really well, and meetings with Guy McKeely, observations and feedbacks, teachers are working with him to make changes in their best practices for tier one instruction, which leads to curriculum-wise, K-12, we're really excited because we had our very first differentiated DE, which means that teachers were allowed to choose. We provided them with six different sessions. This was an admin team brainstorm, and then with the help of Kyle Prime, we were able to provide our teachers with different opportunities to learn about topics that is their personal interest. And actually, we had teachers from every single building stepping up to meet them. So, it's phenomenal. We're looking forward to giving that again.
Superintendent's report, Mr. Roth.
Some good news is, and we distributed the teacher appreciation grant money today. State originally thought it was going to be $9,000, it turned out to be $50,000, but certainly well-deserved, and we wish it were more, but the teachers at least received that reward. You have a financial packet that has a September balance, sheet of balances in it. Don't put too much credence in that, it's, it's a publication, but it's, it's still not balanced yet, so we will come back to you, I hope soon, with, with something that's going to be very accurate. I've been working with the school board coordinator superintendent, Serge, we have several options to do, but that process is going to go on for those of you who are wondering. Currently, we're bargaining with the Teachers Association, and frankly, I think we're working very well together. It's a difficult time to do that, but, but it's a harmonious group, and we'll, we'll do the best we can. And the last thing I was going to tell you is that Neola is, which is the service that we use for our policies, we, we've got a lot of work to do there, and we need to get that updated, get the software updated, and just look at a lot of changes that we need to put into play.
Any questions, Mr. Roth on that? Thank you. Routine matters, I'm going to add, I'm going to pull, hold off on C5 and B3 for the moment, who last one to separate. Routine matters, consent items, Mr. Roth, if you want to run through all the rest of that.
We have our claims and payrolls in the amount of $873,732.48, and you can see the date range there. There's a monthly financial report that is submitted by the treasurer. I'm asking for you to approve me to notify US Bank to, to pay performance services when Phase Three is complete. I would ask you to authorize up to the full payment of $91,097, but we will not pay that much if, if there are still items that are not done. So there is a punch list, and even the owner of Harris' class was present at the elementary today, helping, supervising, and trying to get, to get that one done. Okay. One of our teachers at Camden, Mary Anna Selvich, has, is retiring, and she indicated she's been teaching here for thirty-one years, and she's looking forward to doing some other things. She's, she really is very gracious about saying she's worked with some great people, and she's seen some young people grow up and become very productive citizens, and it's been very good for her. Also, Teresa Appleton's resigning as a high school cook. We had the change of pay for a middle school cheer coach that was, I believe erroneously approved to begin with from four hundred to three hundred for Miranda Klingonfield. Jessica Baines, we're asking you to approve as volunteer swim coach, and Diana Jackson, higher as a high school cafeteria cook, and Gail Burton, you created this position a month ago, and now we are asking you, Phil, to, to help out at the elementary school. Yeah, there's, the middle school is going to Washington DC, and that's, that's during, get my month right, is that June? And the RC swim team is willing to use the cafeteria on, on the dates of December, February, and March for Team Neola to back.
Looking for motion on all of that? Mr. President, I don't know if we accept this president. We have a motion accept, in a second, to accept routine matters, is there a wrong way through, discussion?
I've got a question. I'm Gail Burton. We have the hour rate, but is there a timeframe of, like, sweet aid for, as needed? Is that like a hundred and eighty-two days, like for a hundred and eighty-four month teacher?
It's, it'll be at least a hundred and eighty when the students are here. I, I've never been real clear as to how the instructional aides have been hired, what days they work, don't work. In my experience, I've only ever paid an instructional aide twenty-nine hours for the days that the students are here, and that's it, so.
I didn't know if, like, we'd need, if she'll need to be available through the summertime to file some of the extra Medicaid.
No, the only time a pair would have to be needed during the summer is if that child is attending summer school, and it's written in their IP where they would need adult assistance, they might need somebody there, but not for this particular employee.
Thank you.
Jessica Baines, coaching high school, middle school, boys and girls?
Boys and girls.
And then the use of the cafeteria, are you going to be bringing food?
Bringing it in.
Are you going to be in the cafeteria or the...
Yeah, we're, we have, have a Christmas party in that cheese house, and bring, bring food in, and then, then for the section, boys and girls sectionals, they have a possible party, twenty-four to forty-eight hours prior to competition, hard up. In the past two years, we went to someone's house, and I don't like doing that, so I want to have it at the school like, like other schools do. So I requested either the cafeteria down the middle school or another location during my teen months.
You're not, you're not talking about the kitchen, you're just talking about the...
Yeah, you just, yeah, just tables, tables are set up.
That's what I was getting.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
One question, Mr. Roth, on, on the payroll. I know we're, we're out, you have any for you, I'm a wonderful visitor.
Well, she, she is now very ill, so that is not a good time to harass, but I, she thought she would have a lot of this to, so that's why.
Okay. And then Andrea?
Yes.
Are you getting settled in yet?
Yes, trying.
Have we looked into, I have no signing up for that yet?
I have signed, we did the membership, but the classes will be next year, so.
Okay.
But yes, we've already started that.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor, all the favors say aye please.
Aye.
Vote, motion passes. Okay, C5.
Mr. President, on I M C five, I'd like to, on behalf of the Board of Trustees at Delphi School Corporation, I move that the superintendent issue a written primary notice of board's consideration of non-renewal to any administrator who might not be renewed for the 2020 school year.
Thank you. Second. Here we are, motion, is that on the floor? I will say this before someone makes a motion, that I'm asking the motion read, they are exempted from the fees. The normal associated with the facility usage. I asked you last year when we discussed this with them, there was no discussion about the fee. So I think that may be exempted from that.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that Carroll County Heartland Aquatics use of the pool be exempted from our charge of hourly rate. I'd also like to make sure that they also understand that they're responsible for keeping it clean. That's what a lot of those charges are for, so at this point, you know, we're more than happy to, you know, at least I am, to exempt them from providing, and they've done a good job now.
Second. Do we have a motion, is that on the floor? Discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye please. Vote. Motion passes. D3 fundraisers, I guess, the Carroll County Heartland Aquatics use of the pool. I will say this before someone makes a motion, that I'm asking the motion read, they are exempted from the fees. The normal associated with the facility usage. I asked you last year when we discussed this with them, there was no discussion about the fee. So I think that may be exempted from that.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that Carroll County Heartland Aquatics use of the pool be exempted from our charge of hourly rate. I'd also like to make sure that they also understand that they're responsible for keeping it clean. That's what a lot of those charges are for, so at this point, you know, we're more than happy to, you know, at least I am, to exempt them from providing, and they've done a good job now.
Second. Do we have a motion, is that on the floor? Discussion on that item?
I have a couple of questions. Can you tell me how many members you have in the club at this time?
I think fourteen.
How many members Delphi has?
I think nine or ten. I can't give you the figure right off the top of my head. I know we're getting ready to go through a transition where the high schools already went to the high school team, the middle schoolers are going to be starting up here pretty soon, and so what middle schoolers I have on the club are going to go to their prospective teams. USA Swimming for high schools does not allow the combination of both sports intertwined. Middle school does allow that. USA Swimming and high school, ISHAA allows, you know, two non-high school events for high schoolers that are on the club to participate, but that has come through the KD's office. But they cannot practice with the club at this time until their seasons are over with.
Okay, good morning. What are the costs of the members?
Wish I had my president here so he could actually give you the figures on that. I know we have a couple different, we have a flex membership, I think it's eighty dollars a month. I'm not, don't quote me on that, I'd have to get with him to give you that exact total. Then there's ones that swim three days a week and they have a different fee, so he's incorporated those three different fees. One full-time, one three days a week, and then you have your flex. And I can't tell you which ones are on flex a lot.
And last one, you guys have to provide the insurance?
Yes.
Do we have a copy of the insurance? Do you have?
I don't have that. I could give my president a call and he can produce that.
Okay.
It's part of the USA Swimming length of things that we had to do, but we had to do that. We have our own insurance.
I believe it's, I mean, when we originally talked about with Mr. Powell, that we, no different building age or anything else, it's a million dollar liability clause up in the law, or factors, whatever our is, I know through the club that they helped provide that, but I don't have a copy of that one.
Through Indiana Swimming, there's guidelines that we have to follow to be approved from Indiana Swimming, and they're pretty stringent in what we have to do, so that is one of them that having insurance.
How many, how many days a week do you average?
We practice five days a week.
Five days a week, how does that fit in with high school and school? Is it combined with?
No.
You can't combine that and all the week in the practices, right?
No, you cannot. What, you can, but they have to have their separate lanes, you cannot mix the two through USA Swimming and ISHAA. So what I do is, middle school gets ready to start, I let them start first, so the little kids can come in and get their practicing, and parents don't have to worry about them bringing them back, where high schoolers can drive back, so they'll come in, once Bryant's team starts after the new year, they'll practice from three-thirty to five-thirty, I'll have five-thirty to seven-thirty, and then an hour and a half for the club. And then I've been cleaning the deck and wiping it down. The only thing I would ask is if, I know that I have a broom and a squeegee, but if there's any chemicals or anything that needs to be put on the floor, that I need to be aware of what I can and can't do to do that if I'm going to clean that. Or get a committee that does that for parents and support that.
Okay, we have a motion, second on the floor to approve the Carroll County Heartland Aquatics use of our pool area exempt from fees. All in favor, say aye please. Vote. Motion passes.
May I make a comment? The bean superintendent who's going to charge you for this is operating out of ignorance. A lot of people assume he understands the past and what's happened here, and if that form doesn't say anything, then I try to go by policy. I know that hasn't always been the case, so that's what I was trying to do. I'm not a dream killer.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll let the head coach know that he's okay not to have a heart attack. I thank you.
All right, new business, I think we'll, since there's a variety of things on this new business, we'll do each one individually. Five A and a new business property and casualty insurance policy, Mr. Roth?
We had three companies submit bids for our package, and it's a really complicated, they're forty pages long, the proposals are, and it gets into the small print. But Henriott from Lafayette, MBA age from Lafayette, and then S-Craft bid on it, and the lowest bid, and I believe the best bid was from S-Craft. Now, if you haven't heard of S-Craft, it is a trust, an insurance trust of schools, and it was created back in two thousand and eight because a lot of schools couldn't find adequate coverage, and the cost they were paying was so high, so they joined together to create their own insurance, just like we're in the Mays Trust for health insurance, and now there are almost ninety schools that belong to this trust. So the cost for the package is a hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. That's a ten thousand dollar savings from the prior year. Their fee structure is very different. The insurance package itself is seventy-eight thousand, five hundred, and then we pay forty-eight thousand dollars into a loss fund. And hopefully, if we have, continue to have great experience with claims, which we have here at Delphi, then eventually some of that money will come back to us. There's no guarantee that if we're successful, we've been the last three or four years, it should happen. So now, I do want to specify, this is a three-year commitment, it's a three-year agreement, and I think there's not much risk because you're, like I say, you're providing with ninety other organizations at ninety other schools, and if property casualty rates go up, they're going to go up for everybody. And our loss fund is guaranteed to stay the same for the three years. We will not pay more than forty-eight thousand.
Is that a joint loss fund or just?
Yes, every school, every school pays.
Then every school could grow out of that or?
Yes, that's true, the idea of creating a group. Right now, Twin Lakes, Rossville, Carroll, Winnemac, Tri-Camby, Rochester are all in the trust. I checked with those schools, and they're having a very good experience, recommend that it would be a good investment for us. So I would recommend that we sign on with that spread.
Looking for motion? Second. Okay, we have a motion, second, to bill with S-Craft for our property casualty insurance policy. Discussion? Mr. Roth, can you indicate that's a three-year commitment? Is there a maximum cap? Could we expect that we were at increases in those three years? Do we define that in any other?
No, because, again, like if we went with the one year with Henriott, if we had a total disaster with property, you know, that you had, I don't know, the storm of the century, then all those rates would be going down. But the pool, the forty-eight thousand loss fund is guaranteed, but the other rates are down.
Did the other schools we talked to, did they make any big changes through the years?
No, no, as a matter of fact, it's going down.
Going down.
Yeah.
So it's a variable rate, basically, in experience?
Well, insurance is always a variable rate, depending on.
But there's possibility to do that.
There is. There's a possibility you could get a dividend on that loss fund, but again, like you say, there is no guarantee.
And that's every year, once a year?
They're spacing it out because they're new, but you have to be in it for the three years before you realize the opportunity.
Do they have a local representative?
They are out of Congress.
That's pretty local for a championship.
But they serve, I mean, they have a lot of authority in Indiana schools and a trust that they work against.
I know they're in Henriott. They're in Henriott. They combined Indiana programs, but.
The training, yeah.
And just to clarify, the hundred and twenty-six thousand includes the forty-eight thousand locked in the loss fund, and that, including that forty-eight thousand, a hundred and twenty-six total is comparable to our current premiums?
Ten thousand.
It's ten thousand or less. Okay.
And that is a hundred points of every year for the three years unless the premium goes up and down or whatever.
Okay. Motion second on the floor, all in favor, say aye please. Vote. Motion passes. New business B, Athletic Hall of Fame inductees. Mr. Roth, you want to do this? You're going to do it.
I'll let you do it.
We have three, Brayden Atwood, Allstate wrestler, Big Ten wrestler for Purdue, Tanner Lynn, all around the line, Allstate wrestler, state champion, Big Ten wrestler for Purdue, and Cole Murray, Allstate basketball player, Division One at Northern Kentucky. That's a nice name. Playing, played basketball, but says Allstate pageant. Hi, folks. More sports, right?
Yeah.
I'm assuming this is our local, and they'll be on the board up there and then.
Yes. We're going to try to get all three of them here at the same time, I think. That'll be a little tricky, but that's our goal.
Okay, we're looking for motion. So moved. Second. Okay, we have a motion, second, to approve the Athletic Hall of Fame inductees. We need discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye please. Vote. Motion passes. C, school bus driver handbook.
Mr. Treeback, do you want to share any insights on that, please?
Maybe we just wanted to clean it up, but if you look at the back page, the federal Motor Care Institute of new policies is going to be really outstanding for all of us. It was mainly meant for trucking companies, but very beneficial for schools as well. Everybody we have, we will put it into a database after January sixth, and then it's more important for new employees because the guys that we've had for thirty years are the guys that we've had for thirty years. Somebody new coming in that might be safe out of state, might have had a little violation over in Illinois, comes over here, thinks they got a clean slate, that's going to follow on now, because it's going to be a federal database. So most of the handbook is cleaned up and refreshed, but that back page is a big, now every one of our employees has to be a part of that federal motor care. And the query, the thing there on the back that they sign, that query is the only way we're allowed to check their data, and that's the new important part.
Okay, we get a motion on the floor, and then we'll ask Mr. Treeback questions. So moved. Okay, we have a motion, second, to adopt this school bus driver handbook. Floor is open for discussion. Mr. Treeback's up there, he's ready for questions. When's the last time this was updated?
Probably, I would say, good six, eight years. Yeah, it's been not too long, it might have been a long after I think it was, it's been eleven.
I would say this would be directed at your supervisor.
Yes.
Are you sure that all our drivers will read and comply with that?
Yes.
Are you checking that?
Yes.
Do they have to sign something?
I think it's the next last page is the sign up that they turned into me, and I hadn't, the last time I passed one, I had it.
Do we have reviews on this for the school year starts? Do we have a review? Do we have a view of the drivers and stuff before they use the school year starts?
Do you have an orientation for drivers? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was thinking of evaluations, I did a fall. Yeah, every, the first day, one of the first few days that are teacher days, we need to go through all of that information.
When is it mandated that this has to be done, that second last page?
January sixth.
January sixth.
Oh, you mean, not the sign off of the handbook?
No, no.
The federal motor.
Federal motor.
January sixth.
Okay, that takes it back to January sixth.
Yes, I've already got it entered in.
Right. Okay. Is it an every year thing they have to do?
Yes. We have to run a query on all our, the limited one, it's only, you only go for the full of all of our different persons.
Are we going to have a special section on electric school buses?
Special section in the handbook?
Yes.
No, there'd be special train.
Okay.
Special section.
Well, I didn't know, I was looking through there, bus drivers are responsible for keeping their bus half full.
Yeah. Well, be half charged.
Okay. I'm not going to get hammered on that.
Oh, probably. Somebody will come up with something on that now. But outside of that, the air pressures and air brakes and all the other things, all that has to be checked by all of the different systems, the motor, the pulpit.
I'm telling you, they're going to have to be a licensed electrician.
There you go. Now, don't stir pot, I don't need it.
Any other questions for Mr. Treeback concerning the school bus driver handbook? Hearing none, we have a motion, a second on the floor, all in favor, say aye please. Vote. Motion passes. B, Michelle Pearson to the Board of Trustees of the Delphi Public Library, a four-year term, they're asking that she be appointed again by the school board, she can't be in that position, and this is just a renewal for the next four years. She is willing to do that again, so.
Mr. President, I agree that Michelle Pearson be appointed by the Delphi School Corporation trustees to Delphi Public Library.
Floor is open for discussion. Mr. Treeback's up there, he's ready for questions. When's the last time this was updated?
Probably, I would say, good six, eight years. Yeah, it's been not too long, it might even be longer than that, after I think it was April eleventh.
I would say this would be directed at your supervision.
Yes.
So you're sure that, uh, all our drivers will read and comply with it?
Yes.
Are you gonna be checking that?
Yes.
Do they have to sign something?
Yeah, I think it's the next to last page is the sign up that they turn to me, and I haven't, the last time I passed one, I would have, it's kind of, uh.
Do we have reviews on this before the school year starts, to ensure that?
January sixth.
Do we have reviews with the drivers and stuff before they use the school year starts?
What, when are the, are the? Do you have an orientation for drivers?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was thinking of evaluation, but, yeah, on every, the first day, one of the first two days that are teacher's days, we need to go through all those, that information.
Mr. Treeback, when, when is it mandated that this has to be done, that second last page, the sign?
January sixth.
January sixth.
Oh, you mean, not the sign up for the handbook?
No, no.
Yeah, the federal motor.
Better, better.
January sixth.
Okay, that takes effect January sixth, okay.
I've already got it entered in the, started.
Okay, is that, it's an every-year thing they have to do?
Yes. We have to run a query on all our, the limited, it's only, you only go for the full model that's, for the, the fraction. We gotta have a special section on, uh, electric school buses? Special section in the handbook?
Yes.
No, there'd be special training.
Okay.
Right, special section.
Well, I didn't know, I was looking through there, and it's, bus drivers are responsible for keeping their bus half full.
Yeah. Well, be half-charged.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
If I'm gonna get hammered on that.
No, probably. Somebody will come up with something on that, yeah. Uh, but outside of that, the air pressures and the air brakes and, and all the other things, here's all I have to check, like, all, all the differences with the motor, the pulpit.
Tell them they're gonna have to be a licensed electrician?
There you go. Now, those third parts, I don't need.
Any other questions for Mr. Treeback concerning the school bus driver handbook? Hearing none, we have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Vote. Motion passes. B, Michelle Pearson to the Board of Trustees of the Delphi Public Library, a four-year term, they're asking that she be appointed again by the school board. She's not be in that position, and this is just a, a renewal for the next four years. She is, uh, willing to do that again, so.
Mr. President, I agree that Michelle Pearson, uh, be appointed by the Delphi School Corporation Trustees to Delphi Public Library for the next term.
A second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Vote. Motion passes. E, superintendent seeks school board group to seek a tax anticipation warrant for 2020. Mr. Ron?
We've, uh, we've talked about, uh, how to deal with our finances, and, and there are several avenues we're gonna explore to make sure that, uh, we're in the best possible situation, but one of those could be a tax anticipation warrant, and I just simply need to approve them to, to talk with the different lenders and, and to see what, what kind of programs are available in case we do need, do need our, for.
Yeah, that's a question, I have a, a question. Is that, did that be for a whole year or?
It could be a portion.
So, okay. Uh, Mr. President, uh, I move to, uh, allow the superintendent to, uh, seek, uh, to tax anticipation warrant for 2020 or up to the whole year.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, on the, uh, the denied on the floor. Any discussion?
We, I mean, that's what we have to figure out, is what the costs are gonna be and how much would be available. This, this would more likely be a situation to establish, like, that we don't have to show.
This was represented by Mr. Fletcher and Mr. Vaughn, I still work, but.
Did you, well, to start the process, you don't have to execute on it, so this would
have been deviated, maybe the concern is the school earlier this year. If, if this motion would have been passed early in 2020, maybe they could, could complete that process, but.
Okay, we have a motion, second.
And that could be through, uh, there's a couple of avenues that we could get through, right? The, the, and there's also, uh, a trust, Mon Bank.
Indiana Mon.
Okay.
Okay, motion, second on the floor. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Vote. Motion passes. Future dates, we've got a list up tonight. December tenth is the their graduation. December eleventh, the high school band to the nursing home for holiday cheer. December twelve, the elementary PTA meeting, and following that, we have the high school entertainers. We have a work study at Lafayette, and we have choice matters complication. Twelve thirteen, the fourth grade, the Indy, Indy State House, uh, the high school choices matter complication, and the middle school Christmas dance. The fourteenth, the robotics competition at the elementary robotics competition, Franklin Elementary. Sixteenth to the twentieth, are the elementary Christmas treats, fundraiser for canine dog brim. Uh, the seventeenth is the Camden T D I S celebration. The eighteenth, the all-pro dads in the morning, uh, grades three to five. The nineteenth is the Camden Polar Express, and the elementary holiday spectacular in the evening. On the twentieth is the Camden Christmas program. Uh, the twenty-third to the third is Christmas break. The, on the twenty-sixth is open swim at the high school pool, and, uh, January second, there's open swim and open gym at the high school. On January twelve is the elementary PTA meeting, and on the thirteenth, seven o'clock, is the January regular, regular board meetings. Uh, before we close that out, does anyone want to say with the Polar Express?
We have a Polar Express expert here with us.
Um, why, yes, Mr. Ron will come in and read the Polar Express to each group of, um, our classrooms divided up, and it's a big day, it's a big celebration, so we read, we give out the magic of the holiday. I can't say exactly what the surprise is, but if you read the book, you'll know.
And you also verify what the holiday spectacular is at B C V S?
Yes, that's Mrs. Bryle's evening present, um, presentation, the music spectacular that she has issued.
So the request has, we're using three buses?
For?
For holiday spectacular?
We'll have those there for, uh, any grandparents that have to park up at the top of the hill.
Oh, okay.
Um, there'll be the, uh, handicap lift buses, anybody that might need some assistance can.
That makes more sense, thank you.
Yeah.
Broke into two shows still?
Yes. Yeah, so I'll have Bruce Brown, Laura Steiger, and June Brown, all three here to work both the football parking lot and up here.
Mr. Ryan?
Uh, the, the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth of, uh, for your after-Christmas, uh, July, the, uh, boys and girls, Indiana Kitten basketball class, which is a really good event that's just put on here, the, uh, over two days, you get to see a lot of good basketball news.
Well, I believe it's the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Right inside the, after Christmas.
Yeah.
Girls and boys, J V and varsity. So lots of basketball.
Okay, before we do our board comments, we have a, a presentation to make. Mr. Treeback, on behalf of the, the school board, the school corporation, we'd like to give you a little party gift. Appreciate all the time and effort you've put into many years, and, uh...
Oh, they can put your favorite treats in.